Jennifer, you're first on the agenda.
Okay, uh, for those of you that, uh, don't know me, my name is Jennifer Johnson, I am coroner. Um, I sent in, um, I asked about a, uh, an updated newer vehicle, um, and a power cot system, uh, put in the coroner's office. Uh, the vehicle that we have now is, um, I think it's a 2000, um, and it's a big van. Um, I have gone on, um, several cases where I've been into the night spot, um, and it sits higher up and you go to the cot in. Um, I mean, I'm pretty strong, but, um, getting, um, a body on the cot in the back of that can be difficult. And, um, we recently had, um, an injury, um, we had some smashed fingers. Um, I actually broke my foot because I was going for the cot in and, um, I just couldn't hold on to it anymore. Um, and, um, one of our officers was injured, uh, with a lung thing. Um, so I looked into, um, a power cot, a power cot, our EMS use those now, um, where it will, um, raise and lower with the push of a button. Um, and then when you get it up to the vehicle, then hook it to a button and it kind of pulls it in. Um, the leg is on the cot. The cot that I have now is supposed to hold 700 pounds, but, um, it, I don't know, it, it does, but it just doesn't always work properly and it is new. So it was new to me when, when I took it over. So, um, so that's why I was asking about that. So when I did contact, um, Stryker, they gave me a quote on a brand new one and I told them it'd be a brand new one. I don't need one that's for comfort as far as, um, a patient, um, is being transported. I just need one that's going to work for, for us. There's equipment out there that's safe to use. Um, my background's in ER nurse, we take care of a lot of people that have injuries and, um, we have to take care of the backs and I don't want officers getting hurt and I, I have to have them on my side to help. So, um, but anyways, I emailed her back and she gave me a quote for used system, um, that includes a loading system which is $20,000 and the power pot which is $15,000.
Beyond that, uh, quote, Jennifer, there is also, you know, maintenance agreement? And, uh, I take it that it's per year?
Um, it looks like it covers for three years.
Well, the total, total down at the bottom doesn't come out right then. You'd have to take your 36,000, that 10,641, uh, would, plus your shipping would, uh, get close to 68,000.
Okay.
So it might be a mistake in their quote, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe I'll have her relook at it. She just sent it to me when I asked her to resend it and she just gone. I'm like, I can't believe she gave a damn.
Okay. If that's the case, you're, you're paying for another, oh, you're doubling the cost of your lift. Right. That's, that's the case.
Right.
Okay, open for discussion on this, uh, request?
How long is the cot? Um, I did not measure it, but it does, it would say in the back, um, of the vehicle, but I looked at if the seats are out. It's like, do you have that third row?
What's the vehicle?
Um, well, I wasn't particular on anything. I just said something used and he said it's an extra long Jeep Grand Cherokee that has the third row in it. So if those seats are taken down, um, I actually talked to Marshall County coroner and he has a Durango and they're about the same size and he has the same system in the back of his.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not buying the cot because it's in the back of the vehicle.
Correct. And this, and this vehicle that I got the quote on is just, like I said, something that I wanted used so that it didn't get anything brand new, but, um, it's on the lot now. So I don't even know if it's still, if it's still there.
Can we get the address of the cot in the vehicle to make sure we're not buying the vehicle because it doesn't say online?
Yeah, I think the, the question that was sent out was 2022 Jeep Grand Cherokee, 300. So I just need to take these things one at a time and I think the most important is probably get a lift that we can use that doesn't injure people. Uh, I know this Stryker is a familiar name that when Brandon orders ambulances and so on, that brings a bell to me.
From Brandon.
Other questions for Jennifer? Discussion on this?
Do you have a recommendation on the, um, maintenance agreement? Would you like to have that or do you feel that's necessary?
She recommended it, but I think, um, I think we would probably would be okay without it.
Okay.
She just recommended it because it was used.
Okay.
Um, but, um, I think we'd probably have enough to hold that. It would help prepare it.
There's no type of warranty on the used equipment?
I don't think there are.
Probably. Uh, funding in your budget for this?
Um, yeah.
Fun would that come out of? What are the options?
We really have a quote, do we?
Yeah.
Well, not exact because we don't, if it's, don't include the maintenance, then it's 36,000.
Just for the cot?
Uh, for the cot and the lift.
And, and the power lift. So, yeah, we have quotes on pre-owned.
Chuck, what's the maintenance agreement? If you get something right on it or not, some fish shit for extra money on it?
Yes, and that would be good for three years. But I think the question is, if I did the math on this, to get 68,000, that's at 10,641, you'd have to multiply that. That's for each year, 68,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many cases do you have? That's for your?
Uh, I have 39 last year and I have 15 so far this year. And I can tell you probably for the 15 that we've had this year, I've had, um, cot problems, probably 10 of those.
Yeah, I, I don't, personally, I don't have any issues with getting your power cot. I know exactly what the fourth floor I can, uh, I guess the issue is, is trying to figure out, I mean, that maintenance, maintenance agreement, we just, you know, it's different from here.
Right.
Plus the maintenance agreements, as much as, uh...
Yeah, that's, that's what Chuck had mentioned.
Yeah, I wouldn't be buying the maintenance. That's the commissioner's. I guess if we don't give them the money, they don't buy either.
Yeah. I would, uh, make a motion to go ahead with these two pre-owned with, uh, excluding maintenance agreement. The pre-owned load system and the power cot for a total of 36,000, and we would take that out of county general.
And, uh, this has been moved and seconded. Other comment is, uh, shipping, $817. So that would have to be added.
A surprise.
The other discussion?
How much is an ARPA fund? The cost of your, and you just got the $300,000, $400,000 that's, and that's extra money that you don't spend. And we have to allocate it for, if I went?
Get the money out of there?
Around 346,000, I think. 340s.
I know as a county person, I, I'd be very interested in that. But that's one call that we've done.
County general?
Yes.
I agree with that.
Can we change the, instead of giving it a county general, can we change it to the ARPA fund?
I would, I think a comrade related to that is that, uh, raises, salary raises. That has to be sustainable. We're not, or down the road, or that's, oh, comment. I guess we can talk about where the comes from later and, uh, research on that and get the order, your turnaround time.
Not that I, I, she didn't mention, no. Um, my question is, so we go ahead and get the, the power cot load system, it's going to be installed then into the current vehicle, correct?
Um, till there's something else decided here yet. I, normally when we request vehicles or the departments request vehicles, that's a part of their budget for the coming year. I don't know what the council feelings are on that.
I think that's where I'm confused, but I don't, I'm not sure if it was, because I requested, I talked about it at the budget meeting, but I didn't know if it was approved and I think I talked to...
It was in your budget.
Okay, all right.
It's kind of silly to put a, put it in a van you're not keeping. Are we going to both switch out to the other van? I don't know.
Right.
Another van.
So do we wait?
I don't know. Prices?
Well, I think, you know, just, I think, how many, we, we had two or three people injured, right? And this, this whole thing we got down, so we're fighting wrestling with that, there, but someone else gets hurt.
That I don't, I don't know.
I don't know. I didn't.
But they charged install it on the quote?
There, no, there's not. I think it's just up to us to...
Oh, okay. So we're not paying to get it installed? We're installing it?
Oh, Mike, he's qualified. He can weld right there. He's still got a couple of picks left.
Can we get more information and come back next month or the commissioner's meeting, maybe?
He's sooner than our meeting. Uh, theirs will be next week, next Monday. Can I get him some more information?
So like the price installed that they installed or what it entails to install?
And the install?
Well, I guess, I guess that would be, you know, my question is, if we want her to bring back more information, we need to let her know what information we want her to bring back, like cost installments, you know, do we have competitive quotes on a vehicle? Uh, you know, uh, you know, what information do we want her to bring back to us?
Can you get the address?
I'd like to see the process of installing, something that, me and Kevin, thanks for it to be, it would be kind of stuff like, if it's, uh, if it takes 20, you kind of call engineers to install, then we better think twice.
And then the other thing is railing the same to put it in the current vehicle or do you have to exchange out the railing to put it into?
So current? Double purchasing. That's used, it's like horrible. So we would take that out and if I was to use that in another vehicle. So I'm, I'm not as familiar. I've only seen the cot. I haven't seen the loading system, but I'm going to guess that it has like the thing, you take it, you hold it down and, and that's going to be, that's why I didn't ask about like the price to install it.
Pretty simple install.
Other coroners could do that, so, yeah. But, um, but again, I, I think that's the case.
Maybe a picture of one already installed, kind of how they're done.
Yeah, maybe look at the ambulance to see what, how they're, so that they have the same system. The ambulance.
Ambulance.
Okay, so it's the same. Okay.
So Brandon should know and information as well. Rather than voting on this motion, we would need to, uh, send that motion if you want, Maurice.
Okay. Um, so I rescind the motion to go ahead with this and I make a motion to table this till Monday's meeting and, um, get a standard information, we'll be able to make a, a decision on Monday.
And we can try and talk to Brandon in the meantime as well.
Whether Brandon comes to a meeting tomorrow, Saturday or Sunday.
I'll, I'll reach out to him too.
Okay.
Okay, your other item is the, uh, 2022 Grand Cherokee. Look at other vehicles as well to have a price comparison or go with once on a lot.
I would get a price comparison. So am I getting a price comparison on that same vehicle? Because like I said, I just went with whatever was used and whatever you had in the lot. I'm not like particular on that. I just wanted something long enough to put it there. And I can't get, um, Durango, that was the new one I played, I needed.
We might check at other, other lots as well, just, it doesn't have to be the Jeep Grand Cherokee. You need to know, you need to know the links required for the lift and pot, what other dealers have as well. There goes. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
And Nathan, you were speaking for Jackie Frain?
Yeah, um, Mrs. Frain had a family issue with which she had to deal and asked me to speak as I serve on her, uh, Torres, her, uh, Transportation Advisory Council. As you may recall from conversations earlier this year, um, Human Services Public Transit through KIRPSY is scheduled to receive two new vehicles. Um, the local match required on the two combined is approximately $52,000. At the time, the commissioners had agreed to somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 out of ARPA to support that. We had discussed the possibility of looking to the appropriated CDC budget, specifically the economic development line item to supplement that if needed, and held off to see what other funding sources might become available. Uh, they have just shy of 8,000 or 9,000, uh, between KIRPSY's contribution and Title III reimbursement, a $5,000 donation from a local bank, uh, and then on top of what the county has contributed. They applied to the community foundation for the most recent round of grants in hopes of supplementing all of that and avoiding having to ask the county for any additional, but they were unable to secure any of that funding in this round, leaving them, like I said, with a gap somewhere around $20,000. And I believe Mrs. Frain's intent in coming before the board and council tonight was to revisit the possibility of the county providing additional support, whether through another source or through the allocated funds in the CDC's budget.
Well, to rephrase the board's memory, we, uh, discussed this and I think maybe at the commissioner's meeting, we did approve 8,000 towards each vehicle on February 20th and 24th. And that is where the 20,000 comes from that is still needed. Questions, comments?
I was at the meeting, same meeting Nathan was at, KIRPSY, and these vans are under the CDL, have a seat that showed his pictures. Anyway, they turn to a child safety seat with a harness and pull back down so it's all, they don't have to have CDL driver, all the head start kit. And they, uh, they were hard to get. They've been on order for a long time. They finally came in or want to come in. That's basically the reason they need it. Child seat. All. Pretty much right, Nathan. You got $20,000 in your economic development funds?
Yeah, I've got probably up to 30 that I could be flexible with in that line item.
These, these two, just for Plaski County then?
Yeah, and some other counties are getting some.
I know that while nothing has been confirmed, they have looked into the possibility of once, of selling the van, the vehicles that will be replaced and allocating that money towards this, but I think there were some quite unresolved questions about ownership and eligibility of those funds. So that is potentially on the table as well to reduce that gap.
What fund are you looking at?
So within the existing CDC budget for this year, uh, the economic development appropriation has a 25 to 30 that I could spend on top of what's going to be needed. As I explained to the council last month, when we transferred some funds out of that, we had initially budgeted substantially more than usual, um, because Plaski County was going to be responsible for covering some reimbursable local match funding on a state-funded ready grant. Jasper County has taken over that responsibility, so I don't need the total that has been budgeted. So we've been able, I said, to transfer some two different line item and I still have 25 to 30 that if the commissioners okayed, could be allocated towards that to avoid the council looking at other funds and the additional appropriation process.
Counsel, do you have any objection to assisting with this additional 20,000 coming from CDC budget?
No, I, I think it's responsible for us to show the community that, you know, we're investing in helping our young folk and their family, you know, be able to transport people and, you know, even on the elderly side, you know, we have a, an aging population and we have a, a population that we'd like to keep in our community, which is our young families. And unfortunately, in our community, a lot of them need some help. This is, you know, head start is a, a, a good opportunity for us to invest in that when we talk about investing in housing and other things to bring people to our community. This shows we're investing in our youth as well.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Those are annual payment, 30,000, 50,000. That's just for the regular operation. Okay. So this would be a commissioner recommendation in a motion to, uh, approve the 20,000 that would be coming from the CDC Economic Development Fund.
I'll, I'll make that motion to go forward with this.
Move and seconded. Any other discussion from anyone? One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
So the 16,000 is the...
Perfect.
Uh, yes, good evening. Uh, last Monday, the commissioners, we had opened the three things for our paving project and I just wanted to know that we are awarding it to Central Paving. They was the most, so I just, you have to inform me. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Hey, how big a grant did you get? I never heard on the radio this time.
We get 25,000 for the road and then we got, uh, 650 or 700,000 for a bridge.
Usually I hear it, I heard it on the radio.
Hey, Nathan?
All right. Hello again. Um, I have two guests with me this evening. Um, first one is from Purdue's CyberTap. Couple of years ago, Purdue's CyberTap, uh, I believe the TAP is Technical Assistance Program, conducted a free cybersecurity assessment for Plaski County. Local resident and Tippecanoe County IT Director Kent Croft had connected me with Dr. Joe Beckman, the Assistant Director of the CyberTap team. He is with me this evening as he has asked for the opportunity to speak to county leadership.
Good to take news.
We don't want...
Sorry to bring up a technical thing there. I can't, uh, pass it up, but, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'll be brief. Um, I'm from, as Nathan said...
Okay, there we go.
As Nathan said, I'm from Purdue's CyberTap. So like bag extension and manufacturing extension, we're cybersecurity extension. Probably this doesn't really trip your trigger very much. I get it. Um, and there's not a ton of cybersecurity stuff that you really need to be paying a great deal of attention to in this moment, uh, in this county especially, right? Um, with that being said, and we all have other priorities, uh, there are some good steps you can take to move things forward, uh, and to make sure that, you know, you're not one of the counties that, um, has something really negative happen that causes an act here in the county. Um, I know that you'll be visited by plenty of folks, uh, some federal, some state. Uh, in addition to working with Nathan, I, I work with your clerk, uh, to resolve some cybersecurity related issues between, uh, the clerk's office, state's office, uh, just making some connections and kind of smoothing. Um, and I don't have anything to sell you. I just wanted you to see my face and know that I'm real. Let's wipe it down. Uh, and I'll make one last suggestion to you, which is we've partnered with IU, believe it or not, um, which we never do bilaterally almost, um, to produce a cybersecurity assessment program for the state that's focused on local government. Um, it involves a questionnaire that we send you, a couple hour interview that we do with you after the questionnaire, and then we give you another report similar to the one that we did a couple of years ago, but more focused on top level, very few recommendations, um, very strategic recommendations. And so I'll leave that information with you. Um, the goals of that program are twofold. The first is to help out county itself and the second is to try to inform the state as to what resources... as to what resources they might provide to the counties to help them move forward on cybersecurity as it makes sense, which when someone asks for information about how to do something, that always piques our interest. So, you know, rather than most states, which, which tend to just kind of make decisions and, and throw spaghetti at the wall, I, I was really happy to, to, to be part of this program in the hopes that we can provide better opportunities to counties and local governments to receive cybersecurity assistance from the state. So with that, I'll leave with you both CyberTrack program, which is the assessment program bit, no cost to you. It'll probably take about four hours on average, our, our research shows, to, to complete the questions and a couple more hours to sit through that interview with us, talk to us a little bit. The reason I bring it up to you here is mainly because we'd love for one of you to be part of that process, at least the interview process, so that you understand, you, you feel it, you understand you're part of it, and so that there's leadership involved. The other thing I'll leave you is we've completed nearly 100 of these things. And, and so we, we've produced a report. This part of the report has the executive summary, a couple of key figures, a conclusion, some conclusions, some quick tips kind of things. So I'll leave that with you as well. And finally, I'll leave with you business cards. Take one. If you ever need anything, no charge, no nothing. We're, we're here for you. Call me, email me. Have questions, need a second opinion on something, whatever, if it's cybersecurity related, we'll talk to you. And, and no fee for that. Again, as Nathan mentioned, we're a technical program like the others, so we're here for you. If you have any questions, let me know. I'll leave these right here. And thank you for your time.
Okay, we thank you for your time and your work.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next up on my special guest tour. As you all are aware, a few years ago, a six-county regional consortium received a federal grant through Curpsy to develop a regional agricultural economic development strategy, the Bureaucratic Economic Development Model, or REDM. Two of our key partners in the development of the regional strategy were the Purdue Center for Regional Development and consultant Connie Neininger, who formerly held economic development positions with White and Cass counties in the Indiana State Department of Agriculture. Through the Northwest Indiana Forum, we received round one ready funds from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation to support the implementation of this strategy. To this end, our group has hired Mrs. Neininger and Lee Llewellyn, recently of the Indiana Economic Development Association. Connie is here with me this evening to provide an update on this project for county leadership in the public.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Nathan. Appreciate your help here. He's going to be my tech person here this evening. So as he mentioned, Lee Llewellyn and myself have been hired as consultants to help implement the ag strategy here for this region. And it's important, first of all, that Lee sends his regrets because he was planning on being here this evening too, but they lost power down around Indianapolis today, and it was quite a mess. So, um, so the Curpsy Region Ag Strategy, I'm going to go through to explain what got us to this point and where we're at. And Nathan, I'll kind of point to you when I need you to, to change screens here. So why focus on rural, especially for economic development? Many times, people do not recognize agriculture as economic development. As Nathan mentioned, I come from the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, and so agriculture and economic development go hand in hand. A while back, Lee Llewellyn was sitting in the Indiana Economic Development Corporation's office, and they had a map on their wall that had all of the counties within the state of Indiana. And there were Xs on 42 of those counties, red Xs. And he says, why? He goes, those are counties where the Indiana Economic Development Corp, the state of Indiana, had not completed an economic development project with any state funds. And guess what? All of those were rural communities. And so we realized then that we need to help support rural communities. During my tenure at the Indiana State Department of Agriculture, we also worked on a dairy strategy where we analyzed the dairy industry here in Indiana. We mapped the milk flows. Where was the milk produced? What was happening with that raw material? What was leaving our state? What finished product was coming back into the state? And what were the gaps? What did we need? And we realized if we knew all of that information and we asked for this, the business, and what we found out during that whole strategy for the dairy, we had 4 million pounds of raw milk leaving Indiana every day to be processed outside of the state of Indiana. That's leaving economic development dollars on the table for our farmers, our communities, our businesses. So we worked to attract additional dairy processing to fill that gap. And that's where we attracted the attention of Walmart to build their first-ever dairy processing facility here in Indiana, south of Fort Wayne. And so within three years' time, we went from a 4 million pound output of raw milk to a 3 million pound input in addition. So we used up all that 4 million plus an additional 3 million, and we are now in the plus. And so that's why we said we needed to work on rural economic development, Nathan. And so we asked every region to develop their own region. It didn't have to be a workforce development region. It didn't have to be a pre-designated region. We wanted these counties to figure out how they fit together. And that's where these six counties, Benton, Jasper, Newton, Plaski, Stark, and White, joined forces to say agriculture was important to them, and we needed to develop a strategy for economic development, Nathan. And so through that process, we analyzed a lot of data. As Nathan mentioned, I was contracted with the Purdue Center for Regional Development at that time. We did cluster analyses where we analyzed how many companies within a certain cluster were within this region. The leakages, how much raw material was coming from outside of the state to fill the needs within the community. The shift-share analysis was the workforce. What's happening within the workforce within this region specific to those target industries? We then completed a lot of surveys where we interviewed farmers. We interviewed agribusinesses. We interviewed transportation companies. We analyzed all that data. And then through that, we developed the ag strategy with objectives, action steps, and a timeline. And so this is one of the charts that we analyzed. And I know it's kind of small print for those on the screen, but you do have this sheet in front of you also. So this is the bubble chart that shows the location quotient, which the location quotient compares this specific cluster to, from our six-county region to the rest of the country. And so what we have as far as the agribusiness and food processing, which is the largest green bubble up there. My eyes aren't that good tonight either, so I need to look at the sheet here. And so the larger the green bubble, or the larger the bubble, is the greater the number of employees within that cluster. There's actually 22 different clusters. You've noticed the largest cluster is agribusiness and food processing. The red number is the location quotient, which is 5.1. That means agribusiness and food processing is 5.1 times more concentrated in these six counties than anywhere else in the country. That gives us an economic opportunity. And then we looked at all of the ones in the star quadrant, which are in the top right corner. And so we have the transportation equipment manufacturing, machinery manufacturing, energy, which includes fossil and renewables, advanced materials, and apparel and textiles. Now, I will have to say, there's one of those clusters that really doesn't fit directly into agriculture, apparel and textiles. But all the other clusters have some tie to agriculture. It might be the equipment manufacturing. It might be the transportation and logistics or producing the energy. So there's a lot of connections there with agribusiness and food processing. But Nathan? And so this next chart basically takes that same information and puts it into an easier-to-read chart here. So you can see the star clusters, those are the ones that have the greatest opportunity, the ones in the top right corner. They're growing in concentration, and they're growing in the number of employees. The emerging clusters, they might not be large concentrations yet, but they're starting to move in the right direction. If you look at the left side, the transforming clusters, those are the ones that are dropping. They're losing concentration, they're losing employees. And my philosophy is they're going to transform themselves right out of business for this region. And then the mature clusters, again, they've reached maturity. If they don't do something, they're going to drop into the transforming and then be out of business also. And so, but you can see there are smaller numbers, except for the transportation and logistics, which we said, there's some potential there because everything ag has to be transported, Nathan. And so what we picked were five clusters that we needed to work on. Agribusiness, Food Processing and Technology, Energy, including fossil and renewables, Transportation Equipment Manufacturing, Transportation and Logistics, and Machinery Manufacturing. And so the next chart we looked at is the leakages. In other words, we take that big cluster of agribusiness and food processing and break it down into sectors. These are the top 15 sectors that are listed there. Crop production, I'll just use that one for this example. So the green bar shows everything going into crop produ, production, which includes their, their seed, their gas, their chemicals, their equipment. The green bar says that is the amount that is coming from within the region. The orange bar is the amount that's coming from outside of the region. So there's almost $375 million worth of inputs just for crop production, with almost half of that coming from outside of the region. That's a gap. That's a lost opportunity, though. If we can just bring some of that, whether it's a seed producer, a fertilizer producer, whatever it might be, back into this community, we can help keep those economic dollars circulating within the community more. And so through that, Nathan, we developed our strategies. There's four key strategies. Number one, regional food systems. And I'm not going to go through all of this because, but if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So for regional food systems, we realized through our interviews is that we needed to connect our local foods with the consumers. That could be the farmers who maybe want an on-farm market, or they want to sell more of their product to the schools. We need to help make that connection. So we're researching local food councils. We're going to be connecting with Purdue's diversified farming and local foods divisions. And we're prac, uh, we're researching best practices for those regional food systems so we can start something here within the region. The second objective is ag entrepreneurship and innovation. We want to develop a series of workshops to help connect producers with their resources and also look at developing a regional think tank. Our farmers have a great innovative mind that we want to help put to even greater use here within the region. The second strategy is our food supply chain, meat processing. One gap that we have found is we are short on USDA beef inspectors here, not only in this region, but in, across the whole state. And so what happens is if you've got a cattle lot out there, a beef lot, and they need to take their cattle to be processed, they may have to wait beyond its prime time, which then causes it to lose dollars. Because we have to bring USDA beef inspectors in from Illinois or from Kentucky whenever we're going to be cutting beef for consumers. And so we want to try to change that and help increase the number of inspectors here within the state, especially within our region. And so look at those shortages as far as processing facilities and even cold storage, because what happens a lot of times, that beef or poultry needs to be put into cold storage before it's taking to its final packaging process, uh, processing facility. So there's opportunity to bring additional cold storage in here to this region to help serve the needs. Okay, next page. So then on, also on strategy two, the entrepreneurial ventures again. Again, farmers are great at this, and they have a lot of ideas. So we want to develop a guidebook to help them take their ideas to market. And then co-packing facilities. A lot of people might not realize that there's a lot of companies out there that are already processing food. But if somebody develops a new salsa, and they said, you know, but I don't have a commercial kitchen. But if there's already a company here that is doing maybe vinegar sauces, tomato sauces, or it could be dry grains, and they would be willing to run small batches for this individual, this entrepreneur that wants to start up, we can work with them to do that. And so again, using what's here within the region more. Also, working closely with Purdue's Food Science Lab. If you've not been there, it's amazing, the lab they have. They will even help them develop and test recipes. They will develop the marketing and the packaging, and they will help with blind taste testing. Or you actually have the door you're sitting behind. So it's awesome resource for us that we want to use more. The third strategy is our ag workforce. One of the things we have realized, again, a gap, is our CDL training. We need more CDL drivers. So we're going to be working with our existing programs, such as the Stark County Initiative for Lifelong Learning that has a CDL training program, Ivy Tech, Purdue Northwest, looking at all the resources and trying to expand the number of CDL drivers that are out there. And then again, in the ag workforce, the meat cutting and butchering. Let's increase the skill sets of those individuals because we do have a state certification program that if we increase their skills to where they are state-certified for meat cutting, they can sell that product across the state lines. They can't export it, but we do have a reciprocal program with several other states. Many people don't realize that. So these are things that we're going to be working with our local meat cutters about. Okay, and then I believe the ag workforce has continued with bilingual training. Uh, Belster Milling has a phenomenal bilingual program where they help individuals, you know, acclimate into the community. We're going to be studying that. And we're hearing from farmers quite often that, you know, I need help at harvest time, but there's no place that I can publicize how many workers I need or what's needed. We're looking to develop an ag labor database for the region and expand the awareness of education and trading programs. Then also take this into the high schools to really help, again, build that pipeline of workers going into agriculture and agribusiness. The final step is regulatory streamlining. Indiana has a right to farm policy. Many counties may not realize that. Some counties have actually taken the next step to put that within their own zoning ordinance, just repeating it so people know that if you are building something within an agricultural area, you waive your right to remonstrate against agriculture. It helps protect against some of those nuisance lawsuits. You know, it doesn't stop all of them, but it does help because agriculture was there first. And so we're trying to really promote that. We're also working on a statement of procedures for permitting and zoning across the region. So if there's somebody who wants to come into the region, they know where to go, sort of their first stop shop, where to go, what to do, and how to get permitted. And then helping companies look at import and export capabilities. Because again, if they're producing enough product, then they may be able to export, which could help them bring more income into their community. And so the priority steps, where we're at today and what we've done. Curpsy has hired the consultant, the six-county region has. Uh, we have now selected a representative from each county to serve on the core group. We are prioritizing the action steps. We have set a timeline for the implementation. We're looking at about a two-year process, uh, implementation timeline. We're disseminating the regional ag strategy to all of our local leaders across all of the six counties. We want you to know what's going on, if you have questions, or, you know, if you want to help, we want you to know where we're at and what we're doing. So the next thing is, how can you help? Oh, nope, I, I, nope, you're right, Nathan. Uh, I actually listed our core team members. So we, here's our list of members from each of the six counties. Many of them aren't economic development directors. We also have some Purdue Extension agents. They're ag and natural resource educators that are involved with us in this process. Um, and so again, if you have any questions at any point in time in any of the counties, we do have those contacts already set up. Now, let's see how you can help. So first of all, we want you to help share the information about the Curpsy Ag Strategy with your circles of influence. Let people know what we're doing. If you have a farm operator. If you have a farm operation that you know we should be talking with, let Nathan know so he can let us know, and we can go out and visit with them, or any other type of business that we should be speaking with. Contact us if you are aware of those agribusinesses, food processors, that are looking to expand. You know, talking about mint processing, we've been talking about some of those already, and so there's some opportunities there. Inform us if there are other types of businesses that we should be meeting. Join our meetings and committees as your time allows. Ask questions. And most important, remember that agriculture is economic development, especially for our rural communities. I thank you. My contact information and email for myself and for Lee are up there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those at the same.
What is the training for a meat inspector if we're going to other states to?
Yeah, so what happened, we, Purdue University, I worked with Purdue, and they received a grant, a USDA grant, to actually help with training. So they're developing a whole training program to take those individuals into training, and then working with the Board of Animal Health to do certifications for them, the testing that's required. I myself don't know what all the requirements are, but that's where we're using the resources out there we have, which is Purdue at this point in time. And also, the Indiana Small Business Development Center has an ag initiative now that is also working with us on the meat cutting.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay. Well, Nathan knows how to get ahold of me. I thank you so much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you for yours. Thank you.
All right, one more report from me. Wanted to give you all the first substantive report on the courthouse project, now that we are a few weeks into the work. Start with financials. The bond sale closed on Thursday. The final amount received was $13,293,706.90. This is reflective of the par amount of $12,750,000, the deduction for underwriting costs, and a bond, a bond premium of more than $785,000. After reimbursement to fund 1112 for previous costs incurred, and the disbursements to be made directly by First National Bank to our fiscal and legal advisors, we'll have just shy of $11.716 million in available fund, at least $616,000 of which, and probably more, will be our share of the project contingency. The deposited funds are in two tranches, one directly held by the county and the other held by First National as trustee. I'm currently working on putting together all of the documentation required for reimbursement and budget tracking, and navigating the specifics of paying claims out of one tranche or the other with help from our advisors. Vicar Tilly will be hosting a call to walk us through the process in detail as a supplement to the written guidance that Barnes and Thornburg has provided. Any question on the dollars? Nearly all of the furniture in the building that has been, will be, or may be restored, has been removed and is either sitting in the lobby next door to us or at the restorer's shop. We will be moving the very last of it tomorrow and later this week. Additionally, any and all furniture and fixtures for which the county has no more need, but which are in decent shape, are also in the library, and Mr. Kruger has been incredibly patient and flexible with me in this endeavor. Thank you. I'll be working on selling them pursuant to Indiana Code guidelines in the very near future, so he can have some of his lobby back. There are still some storage fixtures in various vaults. Our hope is that Ton and Blank will mostly be able to work around these, so that they don't need to be removed, but that's a bit of a touch-and-go situation right now. Ton and Blank's carpenters have been working quickly through the building, delicately removing anything and everything that will be restored as part of the construction contract, things like wainscote, baseboards, door jambs, the judge's bench, and so on, while the demolition laborers, somewhat less gingerly, have been making quick work of everything and anything that needs to find its way to the dumpster. Additionally, the MEP subcontractors have been doing their disconnection and demolition work. I have been uploading photographs of the progress to the county's Facebook page on a weekly basis, and encourage you all to take a look. We've made quite a lot of interesting discovers, discoveries, perhaps none more so than a 44-star flag that dates to the early 1890s. If I recall correctly, the 45th state was admitted sometime right around the time the construction of the courthouse was finished, so that may have actually been in the prior courthouse. The clerk's office vault, more than any other space in the building thus far, has been an absolute treasure trove, including that flag, and a concerning number of empty wine bottles dating more than a century. Also, more hardwood flooring in more parts of the building than we had assumed, which may lead to some small changes in plans depending on the condition of the wood. Tomorrow, Ton and Blank has a meeting with roofing, the roofing subcontractor and the scaffolding team regarding that work, and saw cutting into the slab will begin on Wednesday. Once the cutting is done, installation of underground mechanicals can begin. Superintendent John Allen, about whom I cannot say enough good things, is coordinating with the masonry subcontractor so that the retaining wall can be, the removal of the retaining wall can be scheduled. I'm still working on the logistics of the storage of the wall segments. Once the wall is out of the way, site work and civil can begin, these being the highly visible outdoor work that makes it look as if progress is really starting to be made. I'm also in the process of lining up a bat removal specialist and soliciting quotations for guano remediation. That's one of the weirdest topics about which I have ever sought legal expertise, but it turns out removing the bat does not require any sort of competitive process, because it is a fresh, professional service. Cleaning up the bat poop requires a minimum of three quotes, because it does have a physical component on the building. All right, one of our experts at Barnes and Thornburg was able to answer that question on a Saturday afternoon, so I, I don't know exactly what that says about the man's life, but I am grateful for it. Any questions on project progress?
With all this memorabilia that's being discovered, is there any place to put some of these items, like the flag and so on, or whatever else is being found?
For now, we're just putting them in storage, either my office or the clerk's office, until we can work through, see what is solid, what our solutions are, where we can put it once the building is back in operation. I do know that Clerk Bany has started looking into what it would take to have that 1890s flag restored.
We talked about the clerk. What about the storage of these? It's not in your report, but the election equipment? Do we have a place for that?
Short term, I think she has got something worked out. Long term... Long term, I need to double-check the construction plans for ceiling heights, to see if there's enough room for some shelving to double-stack them, and then we'll be able to proceed from there. Thank you. Any other questions on project, progress? Okay, I don't have any right now, but I wanted to talk about change orders a little bit. Last week, I gave the commissioners the heads up that we may be expecting, expecting a few small early ones. Two of the three may actually lead to a cost savings. I mentioned that we have discovered more pay for just repair and refinishing, and remove the costs of removing all of that flooring, the materials cost for new flooring, and the installation costs of new flooring. That's, like I said, going to depend on the condition of it in different parts of the building, but certainly some of the office holders with whom I have spoken have been interested in pursuing that option for their future office suites, if it is viable. Other one, down in what will be the clerk's office, the architect had drawn in, filling in the opening between front and back halves of the room a little bit, better to accommodate the furniture proposed for the space. I have worked with Clerk Bany, and we've been able to eliminate one desk/workstation in that space, so that adding that additional material and labor isn't necessary. And so, we're talking very minimal savings, but we may be able to cut a little bit of material and labors out of there as well. The third one that I'm, that may be coming before the commissioners, will have a little bit of additional cost, but not significantly. And it, what it would do would create a little more floor space for one of the new restrooms on the main floor of the building. Once a large storage cabinet in the recorder's office was moved out of the way, we determined that part of the vault, part of the wall between the vault and the old microfilm room was a later plaster and lath addition, and not part of the original block wall. There is enough space between that cabinet and the one that is perpendicular to it, that we can scoot them both about seven or eight inches without creating any space constraints in that vault. A new wall is proposed, a furred-out wall is proposed already for that location anyway, for the plumbing for the bathroom. This would just allow us not to have to fur out a wall against a wall and leave a little more space for ADA compliance in that restroom. Any questions on those three potential changes to the plans forthcoming? Once we've actually, once the architect has actually answered the questions from Ton and Blank, and we see where that goes, I will present those to the commissioners and see where things are. Not asking for an answer tonight, we can continue this at next week's meeting or after, if that's necessary. But I did, since we're discussing these, I wanted to bring up the change order approval process, so we can get that squared away sooner rather than later. If I recall correctly, for the Justice Center project, I was allowed to sign off on them with just Commissioner Lamer's approval, and not taking it to the full board if the cost did not exceed 5%. And I think that was 5% of a remaining contingency balance. So as long as we do, no more than that, Maurice was able to approve it, and anything above 5%, I brought to the commissioners for full board discussion and approval. Like to do something similar, but if the commissioners are willing to put a little trust in me with a little more flexibility. Just because, as you can see, we're probably going to have a lot of these very small nickel and dime things, some of which actually are nickels and dimes in our favor, as we work through this. What I am asking the commissioners consider is that if the cost of a change order is no more than 2.75% of the contingency balance, with that percent including the architect's fee, so that the actual construction cost would be just a hair over 2.5%, I can sign off on that myself, from that 2.75% to 5.5% or so, Maurice, and then anything above that 5.5%, the full board. So, anything of any substance, I would still take to Commissioner Lamer or the full board, but if it's a super small thing, or especially something where we're going to save money, and I can just move it forward and not have to wait to get a meeting scheduled or get it on the next agenda, we could do that. I said, if you want some time to mull that over, that's fine. If you want to say no right now, that's fine, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a streamlining option.
Bring it back to us on Monday. We're running out of time here. We're into the...
That's the end of my report, unless anyone has any questions.
Who else? Nathan?
All right, thank you.
We're getting into the council meeting time, but Adwina was left off of the agenda. Probably table this till next time, but you can go quickly, go through what you're requesting. Go ahead, go through it.
Thank you for fitting me in, guys. And you will see on your paperwork I gave you, our county scoreboard, and Health First Indiana, or Public Services. Now, we opted into this program, which is wonderful, but we have to offer all these core services. Okay? And we have a grant, we have the grandchildren for vaccines, and we'd like to hire a contracted immunization clerk to help with our mobile clinics. Septic permit officer, we need to hire. This off, this officer will evaluate soil samples, including a minimum spec design sheet, issue permits, and final inspections. And this can be contracted, and we have the money to pay for this out of our 89-12 fund. Right now, I am the septic permit officer, okay, and I spend about three to three and a half hours on every system, from the start to finish. You know, in our department, I wear many hats, and every day I come to work, and literally, I put the biggest fire out first. Okay? I do enjoy my job, and I am dedicated to public health and to serving our community. I feel like I could do a great job as the department administrator and food specialist, but I cannot continue to do all these positions and do them, and do them justice. Okay? With Health First Indiana funding, the health department must meet all core services. We need an emergency preparedness officer. This is not a full-time job, however, it is very, very important. The current emergency preparedness plans we have now are from 2013. The people on these plans, most of them aren't even living now. Okay? And this can be a contracted position, and we applied for the preparedness grant, and we'll be getting that July 1st of this year. Okay? And that's what I'm looking at.
Any questions or comments? I think we'll have further discussion Monday morning as well, if we can have this on the agenda. Are you available again? Thank you. Sorry to be cutting people short, but we're cutting the council short here, so. Approval and the signing of the joint session, April 8th. A motion from the commissioners.
I've approved those minutes, and I would make a motion to approve as written.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mike, does the council want to do the same?
Entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the joint session. Yeah, I got a motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And just one quick comment. I mentioned this before, but people that are writing grants, we'd like for them to come to the commissioners first, so we know what's in the grant. And reminder about gift cards, but that's becoming an auditor situation that's been discussed at the auditors' conference, so just be aware, and please come and, come and see us first. Need a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mike, you want to do the same?
I want to make a motion to adjourn. Got a motion of second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.